Be sure to eat all those delicious treats back there. Remember, we never want to take anything home. So indulge, indulge, indulge. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and those of you who are joining us in the virtual room. We have a robust agenda tonight, and so we will try to get through everything in a very timely manner. The first on the agenda is the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget proposal. Ms. Duncan, would you call the roll, please?
Terri Fraser.
President.
Noah Garcia. Hope Lavelle.
President.
Angela Matthews.
Here.
Robert Proctor.
Here.
Chatham Taylor.
Here.
Ashana Thomas.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Taylor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the United States. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one.
All right, I'm going to read a statement here regarding the public hearing. And it says, "We are here tonight to open a public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. As required by law, the Board of Trustees published a formal notice in the Lansing State Journal, onsite and on the Lansing Community College website, of this public hearing on the budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, for which the college proposes to levy 3.7611 mills. The millage may be reduced by any required headly rollback. This millage amount is referenced in the fiscal year 2026 budget. And approving this budget by the Board of Trustees will meet the Truth in Budgeting statute for the levy of the proposed mills. The board may not adopt its proposed 2025-2026 budget until after the public hearing concludes. Thank you for your interest, and at this time, the board will receive any public comments, but we kindly ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes." Patrick. Ms. Benita? Thank you. Seeing that there are no comments, is there a motion to close the public hearing and adjourn?
President.
Thank you, trustee Thomas, for the motion to close and adjourn. Thank you for second advice, Chair Fraser. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Consider the public hearing on this matter closed. We're going to move on to our regular agenda of the Board of Trustees meeting. And we're going to call to order again the roll call by Executive Assistant Ms. Benita.
Terri Fraser.
President.
Noah Garcia. Hope Lavelle.
President.
Angela Matthews.
Here.
Robert Proctor. Chatham Taylor.
Here.
Ashana Thomas.
Here.
Now, before we move on into this next item of the agenda, I would like to say that I'd like to take a moment of silence because we do have a colleague that has lost a relative, trustee Proctor, his sister. And so, like I do with all of our members in our family, when there is a loss, we do a moment of silence. And so, I would like to honor that tonight as well. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this particular point in time, we do have a presentation. We are celebrating Lansing Juneteenth and Pride Month. And so, at this time, I am going to turn this over to Ms. Tanya for the presentations.
Good evening, Board of Trustees.
Evening.
Dr. Robinson, colleagues and guests. I'm Tanya McLean, Director of the Martin Luther King Jr. Equity Center in the Office of Empowerment. Today, the Office of Empowerment every day considers every individual's voice important. So today, you will hear from members of all three of our centers as we acknowledge Pride Month and Juneteenth. I'm grateful to take part in another passion of mine other than empowerment, and that is artistic expression, as we showcase another facet of the many talents of our team. I invite you to sit back and enjoy as they introduce themselves and their poems.
Good evening. My name is Griselda Iníquez. I'm new to LCC. I'm the Program Specialist for the Cesar Chavez Multicultural Center in the Office of Empowerment. And I'm with
And my name is Estefania Reyes Agnuso. I'm the Training Coordinator for Maya Angelou Training Center. And we'll be reading A Litany for Survival by Audre Lorde. Audre Lorde was a Black feminist, lesbian, poet, and activist whose powerful words gave voice to those living at the margins of society. Born in 1934 in New York, Lorde dedicated her life and writing to issues of race, gender, sexuality, and social justice. Her poem, A Litany for Survival, speaks directly to the fear, strength, and resilience of those who are often unheard, urging them to speak out and claim their power.
For those of us who live at the shoreline, standing upon the constant edges of decision, crucial and alone; for those of us who cannot indulge the passing dreams of choice, who love in doorways, coming and going, in the hours between dawns, looking inward and outward, at once before and after, seeking a now that can breed futures, like bread in our children's mouths, so their dreams will not reflect the death of ours; for those of us who are imprinted with fear, like a faint line in the center of our foreheads, learning to be afraid with our mother's milk; for by this weapon, this illusion of some safety to be found, the heavy-footed hoped to silence us; for all of us, this instant and this triumph, we were never meant to survive.
And when the sun rises, we are afraid it might not remain. And when the sun sets, we are afraid it might not rise in the morning. When when our stomachs are full, we are afraid of indigestion. When our stomachs are empty, we are afraid we may never eat again. When we are love, we are afraid love will vanish. When we are alone, we are afraid love will never return. And when we speak, we are afraid our words will never be heard nor welcome. But when we are silent, we are still afraid. So it is better to speak, remembering we were never meant to survive. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Kennedy, and I'm the Executive Assistant to the Chief Diversity Officer within the Office of Empowerment. And I'm here with
Kylie Carter. I am the Equity Coordinator at the Martin Luther King Jr. Equity Center in the Office of Empowerment.
In honor of Juneteenth, we will be reciting Let America Be America Again by Langston Hughes, an inspiring call for justice, equity, and the fulfillment of America's promise. Through this poem, Hughes gives voice to those long-denied freedom and opportunity, reminding us that the struggle for liberation did not end in 1865.
And as we read today, we invite you to reflect on the continued journey towards a more inclusive and truthful America. Let America be America again. Let it be the dream that it used to be. Let it be the pioneer on the plain, seeking a home where he himself is free.
America was never America to me.
Let America be the dream the dreamers dreamed. Let it be the great, strong land of love, where never kings connive nor tyrants scheme, that any man be crushed by one above.
It was never America to me.
Oh, let my land be a land where liberty is crowned with no false patriotic wreath, but opportunity is real and life is free. Equality is in the air we breathe.
There's never been equality for me, nor freedom in this homeland of the free.
Say, who are you that mumbles in the dark? And who are you that draws your veil across the stars?
I'm the poor white, old and pushed apart. I'm the Negro bearing slavery scars. I'm the red man driven from his land. I'm the immigrant clutching the hope I seek and finding only the same old stupid plan of doggy dog, mighty crush the weak. I'm the young man full of strength and hope tangled in the ancient endless chain of profit, power, gain, of grab the land, of grab the gold, of grab the ways of satisfying need, of work the man of take the pay, of owning everything for one man's own greed. I'm the farmer, bondsman to the soil. I'm the worker sold to the machine. I'm the Negro servant to you all. I'm the people, humble, hungry, and mean. Hungry yet today, oh, despite the dream, beaten yet today of pioneers. I'm the man who never got ahead. The poorest worker bartered through the years, yet I'm the one who dreamed our most basic dream. In the old world while still served to kings, who dreamt a stream so strong, so brave, so true, and even yet its mighty daring scenes. In every brick and stone, in every furrow turn, that's made America the land it has become. Oh, I'm the man who sailed those early seas in search of what I meant to be my home. For I'm the one who left dark islands short, and Poland's play, and England's brassy lay, and torn from Black Africa's strand, I came to build a homeland for the free.
The free? Who said the free, not me? Surely not me. The millions on relief today, the millions shot down when we strike, the millions who have nothing for our pay. For all the dreams that we've dreamed, for all the songs that we've sung, and all the hopes that we've held, and all the flags we've hung. The millions who have nothing for our pay, except the dream that's almost dead today. Oh, let America be America again, the land that never has been yet and yet must be the land where every man is free. The land that's mine, the poor mans, Indians, Negroes, me, who made America, whose sweat and blood, whose faith and pain, whose hand at the foundry, whose plow in the rain, must bring back our mighty dream again.
My, my. Would all of the readers please stand? Thank you so much for your courage to even recite with passion both of these poems. Especially in the times that we live in today, courage is absolutely a commodity that we just must value. So thank you again. Okay. Now, you can eat back there, or you can leave, whichever way you want to do. You don't have to stay in here. As we move on with our meeting, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. You too. Thank you. We are going to move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Minutes. And before we get there, colleagues, you were sent a communication by Ms. Duncan with regards to the Regular Board of Trustees' Meetings, which was May 19, 2025. The correction to that meeting was trustee Garcia arrived at 6:10 p.m. That was the correction. It's not 8:10. It was 6:10 p.m. So with that noted, is there a motion to approve the May 19, 2025 Regular Board of Trustees' Meeting and, number B, the June 3, 2026?
Let's say five, three, five.
Ah. I said that, I'm sorry. I made that mistake. June 3, 2025 Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Workshop. Chair Matthews, I still move. Thank you, trustee Taylor. Thank you, trustee Thomas. So it's been moved by trustee Taylor and seconded by trustee Thomas to approve the May 19, 2025 Regular Board of Trustees' Meeting and the June 3, 2026 Fiscal Year 2025. Is this supposed to be June 3, 2026, or the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Workshop?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any discussions? Ms. Duncan, please take the roll.
Noah Garcia. Terri Fraser.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Angela Matthews. Ashana Thomas. Motion carried.
Thank you. Colleagues and public, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Agenda Item Number Four. Hearing none. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five. Limited public comment regarding Agenda Items. Not consent agenda, but Agenda Items only. Are there any persons signed up? Ms. Duncan?
No, ma'am.
Patrick? Is it four Agenda Items? Okay. Okay. I'm not there yet. I'm not a consent agenda yet. Thank you. Okay. All right, seeing none, we can move on to the President's Report. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, Chair Matthews. Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
Colleagues, members of the public. We have a big packet tonight, so I've made an effort to keep the items in my report small. And I will, as I always do, rely on Patrick's help for some slides. Thank you so much. While Patrick's pulling up the slides, Chair Matthews, you and I always like to remind people of the printed President's Report. A couple of quick highlights from the report, which is available online. On page four, you'll see a blurb about a wonderful ongoing series we have here called Historians at the Movies. Our history faculty have been doing a great job engaging their colleagues and students and members of the college community by watching movies and exploring the history. They recently watched Radium Girls, a really interesting historical film. On page 12, you will see recognition of Camaria Taylor, who won the Michigan Student Financial Aid Association's New Professionals Award. We love it when our colleagues win awards. Camaria, congratulations. It's written a great article about a new course called NCEL 160, which is an English as a Second Language course for healthcare students, particularly targeted at new Americans. This is a bridge program. Wonderful, wonderful information there. And finally, Chair Matthews, on page 15, two really heartwarming photos of graduations of the Fire Academy, the 80th Fire Academy, and the 115th Police Academy. The
They're good.
The archived PDF and the flipping book editions are on the President's Report page. Also, first, I don't expect you to read this chart, trustees, but I do want to highlight some recent enrollment numbers. And I've already told Dr. Fall that I was doing this, so hopefully I don't make him nervous. I want to tell you about summer enrollment. We're 28 days into summer, and we are 7.1% up in headcount and 9.1% up in credit hours. Looking forward to the fall, and we have 66 days yet until the fall, so we don't Oh, okay, okay. We won't skip the summer increase, 7% in headcount. Looking forward to the fall, there's 66 days until the start of term. And these things can be quite volatile, up and down. But as of today's report, we're 12.7% up in headcount and 20.8% up in credit hours. We do not expect those high numbers to hold, but that really does bode well for our fall enrollment. So I wanted to highlight that. So, I wanted to highlight that. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Thank you. On the next slide, thank you. On the next slide, many of you started your day the way I started my day. We were over at the Kellogg Center for the Michigan ACE Conference. LCC is proud to be the host and the sponsor of the Michigan ACE Network Conference. It was held at the Kellogg Center, still going on, actually. It will be going on tomorrow as well. Trustees were attending and participating. Chair Matthews was on the Shades of Strength panel this morning. And Dr. Selina Samuel and her colleagues have done an amazing job hosting the conference. I'll tell you, I gave the welcome this morning. That's kind of a privilege of the host institution's president. And when I said the name Dr. Selina Samuel, the room erupted in applause. This group understands that LCC is doing a great job. We didn't have a chance to be there for part of the day. We are giving Michigan ACE the LCC Star Standard Treatment. Lane Ingram, all of the media and AV colleagues, including the silky voice of DeDaly and Lowry coming through the speakers. Every great event that you've seen LCC do, we have opened up a can of that over at Michigan ACE. And my understanding from Lane and others is that we're getting a lot of positive feedback for the way that we're doing that. So, congratulations to Dr. Samuel and all of our colleagues. Third out of four, Chair Matthews, I do want to briefly talk about advocacy at the federal and state level. This could be much longer. And I understand those of you who are at Michigan ACE heard an excellent advocacy presentation from their government relations folks. But I do want to let you know, and those of you who are trustees already got a little wind of this, Chair Matthews shared some outstanding news from ACCT about some advocacy wins on the reconciliation bill, which contains a number of troubling developments on Pell. Now, some of them are still there, but many of the ACCT advocacy talking points have been addressed so far as far as eligibility changes. And Chair Matthews did share that with the board directly from ACCT because of her position with that group. There are many remaining concerns at the federal level. The White House's, what we call the skinny bill for fiscal year 26, includes some very drastic things that impact the two-year college sector, including the elimination of the Trio Program, Adult Basic Education, the elimination of the strengthening community colleges' training grants. It shifts Perkins away from post-secondary. There's a reduction in maximum Pell. The advocacy work at the federal level is not over. So, I just wanted to let you know that. On the House side here in Michigan, we finally do have a budget recommendation from the Michigan House of Representatives. We previously had one from the governor, one from the Senate. The House recommendation, which passed the House, includes a 1% reduction for all community colleges. That's 0.8%. Don will talk about this when we get there. It also proposes a shift in MIPs' pension liabilities that would be a serious issue for us. And there are some boilerplate changes on some of the cultural or local governance issues, including diversity, equity, inclusion, remote work, common areas, gender in sports, salary restrictions, affinity group graduations. None of this is law. That's what I want to tell you. It did pass the House. We have a Senate version. We have the governor's version. And the next step is what's called a non-concurrents vote. So, we are very likely not looking at an adopted budget by July 1. But what I want you to know is Dr. Glasgow, Lane Ingram, Ron Hamm in DC, and in particular Katie Wiskowski and Brandy Johnson and I are all constantly monitoring these details for their impact on the college. So, that is a very thumbnail update about where we are with state and federal advocacy. And I'll end with a feel-good before we introduce new employees. Many of you know that for years I've led this community bike ride called Pedal with the Prez. And we always end that Arctic corner in Old Town where I treat everybody to ice cream. That's one of the ways we get people to come on the ride. Well, they have a picnic table that is blue and gold and themed for Michigan. And they have another one that's green and white and themed for Michigan State. And for at least a couple of years, we thought we really needed to participate in this. So, Lane Ingram and Tricia Rotoff in my office worked with our incredible colleagues at West Campus, saying, "We can do better than these U of M and Michigan State tables." So, what you see there is an incredible LCC picnic table. And the LCC logo, which, again, I point this out all the time, was designed by our own Bruce Mackley. That is CNC cut into the wood and painted in a different color. So, it's not even close, which the When I drive, I drive by Old Town a lot. And when people have a choice of which picnic table to eat at, they're eating at ours. Right? So, that's there for the bike riding season. Okay. Thank you. Great example of what happens at LCC. You know, somebody like a president will say, "You know, we ought to do X." And the next thing you know, X gets done, and it gets done really, really well. So, finally, trustees, I love the way we end the President's Report. Always like to invite new employees to introduce themselves to the board. It's completely optional. I'm not sure if we have any of our new colleagues here with us tonight. Is anybody here with us new? Oh, please, could you stand up and introduce yourself? Welcome. Being here tonight. Our board meetings are riveting and interesting, but we will not be offended if you have something else to do this evening. We're just glad to welcome you to our college. And with that, that's the President's Report, Chair Matthews.
And just to just toot your horn a little bit more, you and I are on the same page with a couple of things. LCC is just really doing a lot of great things. And so, we can't say all of what we're doing. But if you go out there and you look at the President's Report, the digital book, you will see. I wanted to highlight, if you don't mind, and adding to what you have presented. Page eight, it says, "LCC is the first in Michigan to host the BCSI Training for industry-recognized laboratory skills credentialing students." I said, "We're the first in Michigan." That's huge. That's not something to just breeze over. The food pantry served 189 students in May. The art program created a mural for DeWitt Schools. Urbison Woods Elementary School called LCC art professor Susan Hardy in order to get this done. They could have called anybody else, but they called LCC. And then the impact of BCI, it helped clients secure $7,591, $591, and $100. I said $7 million for new capital to launch or grow businesses. This is what LCC does. And if you want to know what we're doing, check out his report. You will see all of the stats. So, I just want to give you and Lane and all of you who work real hard a hand clap for even these stats and these stories being available. Oh, sorry. There's a youth program in Mason, so we I'm sorry. It says awesome. Go out there and look at it. Go out there and look at it, okay? Go out there. All right. Yes, that's bragging right. So, we're going to move on to agenda item number seven, Consent Agenda for Action Items. Colleagues, is there any item that you would like to remove for further discussion? Trustee Thomas?
Patrick's looking at me. Madam Chair, I would like to remove Consent Agenda Item Seven, D5.
D5? D5, okay.
Desktop.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Trustee Lavelle, I thought I heard you say something.
Yes, and I would like to remove Agenda Item C1, the Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Association of Supportive Professionals.
Okay. Okay. So, trustee Lavelle, I would ask that you would partner with me here because I was going to move Consent Agenda Item C, both one and two. But to move that to a closed session, if that is no objection with my colleagues.
Objection, no.
All right. So, let's just note that we're removing Consent Agenda Item Number D5. And then we're also moving Consent Agenda Item Number C, that is being moved to closed session. Yes.
Chair Matthews, I'd like to remove Consent Agenda Item Number Seven, F Request for Proposals, Number One, Grounds, Landscape, and Snow Services.
Okay. F1? Yes. Okay.
Chair Matthews, could I, on that one, if I could remind you and trustees that we recently sent a new and corrected version of F1 to the board. The original packet contained some inaccurate information.
Okay.
So, the new packet, which everyone has, and I believe is here, is accurate. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? So, excuse me. Do I have a motion for Consent Agenda Action Items, A1 and 2, B1 and 2, D1, 2, 3, and 4, E, and then F, number 2? Thank you, Vice Chair Frazier. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. It has been moved by Vice Chair Frazier and second by trustee Taylor to approve Consent Agenda, excuse me, Consent Agenda Action Items, A1 and 2, B1 and 2, D1 through 4, E, and F1 through 2. Any discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, would you call the role?
Terry Frazier.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia. Angela Matthews.
Yes.
LaShonda Thomas. Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Robert Proctor. Motion carried.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number D5, Virtual Desktop Infrastructure?
No move.
Thank you, trustee Lavelle. Is there a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Frazier. It has been moved by trustee Lavelle, second by Vice Chair Frazier to approve D Cooperative Purchases, Virtual Desktop Infrastructure. Discussion? Discussion of the item?
My question was, what is the difference in what we are using now from what we're trying to get at this time?
Thank you for the question. What I'll do is I'll have our CIO, Bill Garlic, answer that question.
Thank you, Chair Thomas, for that question. Though what we're asking for is a continuation of what the college is using already today. So, this is an extension of the product that we're already using.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other questions regarding D5? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, call the role.
Noel Garcia. Terry Frazier.
Aye.
Robert Proctor. Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
LaShonda Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve Item Number F, Request for Proposal, Number One, Grounds, Landscape, and Snow Services?
No move.
Trustee Lavelle? Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Taylor, it has been moved by trustee Lavelle and second by trustee Taylor to approve Request for Proposals, Grounds, Landscape, and Snow Services. Discussion?
I just had a question. We had a hefty agenda, but I still noticed this one. So, my question is not necessarily, you know, the how, but the why. You know, why are we switching, I guess, in a sense, vendors? Just because I typically like to go local. So, I see that in Stiles as a known one. And I also want to know, who was it previously before, I guess, doing bids on it? Or That's my first part of the question, but couldn't answer.
Yes. Thank you for the question. So, I cannot remember who we had before Stiles. But typically, what we try to do is every three to five years, because we're a public entity, we do try to bid things out. Because even if we have a vendor and we like their services, we can't just keep using them forever and ever. We have to bid them out. So, we usually do that every three to five years. So, that's why sometimes you'll see in a packet that we're awarding a three-year agreement with two one-year options. If they're doing well, we'll keep them for those additional two years. But that's really what we do. We have a team of people who have to sign conflict of interest forms prior to being a part of a selection committee for any vendor. And those individuals, they receive the information, they review them, different aspects of it. Part of it is, you know, are these companies able to do the work? And then we're also looking at references. We're looking at how much they're going to charge us, and we're also looking at their service. And so, yes, of course, we do a lot locally. If we look at our spend, most of our spend is local or within Michigan. And so, even though this vendor isn't local to Lincoln, they do have the ability to be here and to provide this service. I was not personally on the team. We do have members of the team who reviewed it here, if you need specifics in terms of, you know, what stood out from this bright view from our other contractors. And I'm sure they can share that. But they go through an extensive process. You have three or four people that are reviewing everything. You can have a packet of information, this, that. They're interviewing vendors, and they're just trying to do what is in the best interest of the college. And they look at all of that, including especially for a current vendor, past performance.
Okay. Seeing there are no other questions, Ms. Duncan, would you take the role?
LaShonda Thomas.
Aye.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Terrence Frazier.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia. Robert Proctor. Angela Matthews. Motion carried.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, it's an action item. And I will turn this over to Don Wilson.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
On Tuesday, June 3, we had a workshop for the board to give the board kind of a preview to what we would be bringing to the board for approval tonight. The numbers that were shown at that date are the same numbers that are in the proposal tonight. Now, in almost two weeks, things changed. However, they change in a manner which, at this point, is not very definitive. We now have the third proposal that we did not have before the workshop, and that was from the House. Dr. Robinson described that earlier. That would have a significant impact if it's approved. However, I think most people believe that it's not going to survive in that format. And at the hearing, when the House approved that and when they had questions, it was basically, everything's negotiable. And so, there's a wide, wide range between what the governor said, what the Senate said. That's a relatively small margin of about $300,000. But however, from the governor to the House, it's like $1.2 million if it's hard. It pertains to a operating corporation for the college. And there are other things in that bill that, in my words, parrot was going on at the federal level in the current administration in terms of things that they were they do not want colleges to do or things that the colleges should do. DEI is the most obvious thing that they are pointing at. Again, they just kept saying, "Everything is negotiable." The next day, the Senate had a meeting to basically informally respond to the House. There's probably a lot of words that There's probably a lot of words that could use to describe it. My word was appalled that the Senate was, that the things that they were proposing, not only for community colleges, but also for public universities and for K-12 were not things that they were in favor of. So I believe obviously it's going to be a long negotiation between today and September 30th. Because that's when the state's fiscal year ends. Like the federal government, there's always the possibility of a shutdown if there is no budget in place for October 1st. Hopefully that is not the case. But that will have some impact on the college. But again, we'll be forward after we have the budget approved. But we all know that once you have a budget, you have one very important thing to do, manage it. A budget is a plan. Things don't always go according to the plan. And therefore I know from past experience here at LCC that if there are some things that happen that are significant enough to give us pause as far as the budget is concerned, then we have that ability to manage that. And I feel confident that under Dr. Robinson's leadership and the rest of the executive reading of the team, that that can be accomplished. It may be a possibility depending upon the nature of it. We might come back to the board for an amended budget. That would personally not be my preference. That it, again, we should be able to manage it within the parameters that we have. And so there's a variety of ways to do that. Certain new things that were approved in the budget can be delayed until we get better information. Something, other things that maybe even are in the current year budget, you know, we also may delay the next year of that. So there are a lot of things that are at the administration's option to be able to respond to what happened both at the state and the federal level. So, you know, at this point in time, obviously the most important thing is it's a balanced budget. Are there unknowns? Yes, there are unknowns. We've heard Dr. Robinson talk about enrollments. And we budgeted basically flat from where we are today. So anytime we are seeing some growth in summer, fall, obviously too early for spring, we would have that at our advantage. Again, because of what's going on with the economy, we have been conservative on what we think we will earn in terms of investment income for the college. And so there are some bright spots that, you know, that we can fall back on. Because you never do a budget based upon the most optimistic approach to everything. That's doomed to failure unless you have a crystal ball. And so we feel confident that this is a good budget, given the circumstances that we're operating under. And without responding to any questions, members of the board may have, but respectfully request in order to adopt the budget as presented.
Just very quickly, and I'd be, I know that Don and I, but Don in particular, are very open for trustee questions. Just to supplement Don's excellent financial answer. From a larger strategic vantage point, the budget as presented includes a number of controls that we have at our fingertips for making adjustments in the event that the negotiations between the House, the Senate and the governor result in less revenue than we have. Don mentioned one of them. We've been very conservative in forecasting tuition revenue. We also have a contingency factor built into the budget. We also have what is called a vacancy factor. We've talked to you in the past that not every vacancy is filled right away. And for every week that a job is open at the college, there are savings. So from our perspective, this budget still puts us in a position to adequately manage the finances during the coming fiscal year with the first choice being to manage within what you have approved, if you are able to approve it. And then in the event that we need something different, and this has happened in my five years at LCC, we would come back to the board with a budget revision. I happen to agree with Don that that would be not the first choice. The first choice would be for us to manage the budget as it's constructed. And I'll just end by repeating one really important point that Don made. When we were, we had two of the three chambers of government, you know, on record as what their proposed budget would be when we brought you the budget. And we didn't pick the rosiest one. We tried to forecast where we thought this would land after managing over several fiscal years. And for the new trustees, this is always a bit of a dance for us at LCC because our fiscal year is different from the state. The state has a different fiscal year and we are often in this position where we don't have a finalized budget from the state before we have to finalize ours. So the thumbnail sketch is we believe we can manage within this budget. And if we find that we cannot, we would come back and present to you again.
Yeah, just to add one thing, as Dr. Robinson said, you know, this is not the first rodeo when it comes to this type of situation. And we had a very big one called the COVID pandemic. And we adopted a, in our case, a skinny budget at a meeting such as this, knowing full well that we were going to have better information later on in the year. So we did come back to the board in January, if I recall correctly. And things that we did not include in this skinny budget, we restored. Because we now have better information. We knew what we were going to receive from the federal government in terms of funding that they were proposing and enacted. And so it's, again, it's basically what you know when you know it.
Trustee Thomas.
Thank you both for easing my mind a little bit. I don't think it's the same. It's a little peculiar because of whatever. But I trust that you have it under control. I do hope that the first go to is not to not fill positions, especially if someone is taking the blunt of the weight. So I would hope that, I mean, I trust that we're cushioned enough and that you said we were conservative and so we've done well, but I am concerned. And I was ready to say no. I was not going to doubt, but you guys may feel better.
Yeah, in terms of discussion as far as a hiring brief on current positions, that's not on our list. Now, we have some new positions that are in the budget. We may wait a little longer on those depending on what we hear. But we evaluate it given what's going on almost daily.
That the second part is what I was talking about, not the first. It didn't cross my mind, so yes.
All right, everyone, is there no further questions for Don and Dr. Robinson? Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget proposal? Oh, move. Thank you, trustee Lavelle. Thank you, trustee Thomas. There's been moved by trustee Lavelle and second by trustee Thomas to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget proposal. Any further discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, please take the vote.
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
LaShonda Thomas.
Aye.
Terrence Fraser.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia. Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone. We're moving on to monthly monitoring reports. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Chair Matthews. In your packet are the monthly financial statements. I almost brought these up. As we go through the agenda, you will see the financials every month. So another way to keep a track of this as we go through. And Don is here if you have any questions. Any comments about them?
Nothing in particular. The fiscal year is moving along well for, at this point in time, 11 months and 16 days into it. So, but we have obviously from an operational standpoint, the college's audit coming up, which you'll see hopefully in October. And so we'll be kicking off one year and finishing the other one at the same time.
Next item, Chair Matthews, is the monthly public safety report. We have an excellent and transparent system for tracking our interaction with the public and our LCC police. And the chief is here if trustees have questions.
Questions, colleagues? May I? Next on the agenda is the policy development. I'll turn this over to trustee Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items. They're wordy, but not that significant. And I'll explain in a moment. In December 2024, you may remember, the board adopted revisions to the policy titled prohibited sex for gender-based discrimination, harassment and sexual misconduct. The purpose of the revisions was to align college policy with the requirements of federal laws, rules and regulations about certain forms of sex or gender-based discrimination, harassment and sexual misconduct. Things change. Since the board's action in December of 2024, a federal court has vacated the 2024 Title IX regulations. And as a result, the court decision, the 2020 Title IX regulations have been reinstated. Presented to the board at this time are amendments to the college policy to align college policy with current Title IX regulations. One step forward, one step backwards. What's next, Ms. Carroll? Next in your agenda is an anti-hazing policy. And this policy is proposed to comply with state and federal laws on anti-hazing so that we don't get gregged for something we should have done. And finally, the Ferry Act. The purpose of the policy is to establish a college policy that aligns with the Gene Clary Campus Safety Act. So those three policies are to make us compliant with those rules, regulations, laws that we have to observe to maintain an important part, federal funding, so. And there's a third item, a fourth item that's related to a process we already have in place. It's a program review amendment. And it amends the program review policy to require reviews of faculty qualifications for each academic program. And it aligns with the higher learning commissions criteria for accreditation. That covered. We're anticipating it coming through, so we're going to be ahead of the curve on that. So that's my report, Madam Chair. I have one further item. I would move to suspend the bylaws for the purpose of taking up these items for immediate approval, given that we're required to comply with some laws and other regulations. So I'd so move the suspension of the bylaws.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Proctor, I mean, Vice Chair Fraser. It's been moved by trustee Proctor to suspend the bylaws for these particular policies. And second by Vice Chair Fraser. And we're also within this approving. Is that correct? Or the second one?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So I thought you would just welcome together. Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Duncan, call the row.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
LaShonda Thomas. Noel Garcia. Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Terrence Fraser.
Aye.
Angela Matthews. Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Madam Chair, if I'm in order, excuse my voice. I move the immediate of the policies that are presented therefore. Don't know what happened.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, trustee Thomas. It has been moved by trustee Proctor and second by trustee Thomas to approve the policies as presented and set for. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, please take the vote.
Chatham Taylor. Noel Garcia. Terrence Fraser.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Shonda Thomas. Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, colleagues. We're moving on to the linkage planning implementation. Chair's report. At this particular moment, I just want to really just think Dr. Samuel and her team and being Shanta for an opportunity to be engaged in the Michigan ACE Conference Panel. Shades of, shades of color. Shades of strength. Right. Very well attended. And I saw the advertisement on television umpteen times with regards to the conference. And the room was very packed. It was full of women in higher ed and all there unified with one voice to learn more and to hear and share stories about how that we can empower and encourage each other, but also to show up being our authentic selves in spaces and places where it can be uncomfortable at times. But their support was there, the care was there, the love was there. Everything was excellent. And the panel discussion was real, transparent and authentic. And so I'm just grateful for the opportunity to sit amongst such esteemed women on the panel. So thank you, but I think we need to give them a hand for what they did today. Um, and trying to think where else I've been. I don't know. So with that somewhere, I am going to vote to committee report, audit committee update. Trustee Proctor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Getting my voice back a little bit. Audit committee was fairly straightforward. We had a presentation on the professional services plan for the audit for the year's ending, June 30, 2025. Ms. Fowler, who will be here in October, gave us an overview of the plans for the upcoming audit. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to C, board members.
Sorry, we need approval of the audit.
Oh, okay. Item D.
That's right. We didn't have. I'd move, this is a little bit unusual, but approval of the audit committee minutes.
Is there a second? Thank you. Been moved by trustee Proctor. Been moved by trustee Proctor and second by trustee Thomas to approve the June 2nd, 2025 audit committee meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, call the row.
Robert Proctor.
Aye, and I was present.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Terrence Fraser.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia. LaShonda Thomas. Motion carried.
We got some jokes tonight, okay. We're going to move on to item number C. Board members report foundation, Vice Chair Fraser.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the foundation report, I have great news. Star Day of Giving happened recently and received support for 12 different programs. Over $14,000 was raised through 152 gifts from 87 donors. But the most important part or the thing that hit me the most was 23 of those donors are new donors, first time donors. So give it a hand. The foundation is building, moving forward. Another big piece was the Employment Development Fund. As we all know, LCC is a fun place to be and the funding, the development, employment is using those funds to do some activities to build family and build relationships. So they traveled to Detroit Tigers game last week and as we know, they won. That's the number one, the best, what's it, the best one in the league, in the country, top in the country still.
The Tigers.
Yes. And then also they'll be headed to Myers Gardens soon. So continue to do some volunteer work within the community at the Greater Lansing Food Bank, Habitat for Humanity and the Girl Scout. So not only are we doing great things for our students, but also reinvesting back into our community. So it's a full circle moment. And on June 22nd, Tristan Davis Faulkner and family and friends will be gathering in Michigan Room online as well as in person to celebrate his 50th birthday. 1975 is a great. 50th birthday. 1975 is a great year. In addition to sharing stories, they'll be raising money for their scholarship. So please come out and support, um, as that scholarship helps support the youth and uplift their need in the greater area. So that's the foundation report.
Moving on to unfinished beer business, hearing none. New business, um, that'll come in September. We are to public, we're down to public comment. Um, anyone at this particular time, if you've signed up, you can, uh, address the board. You do have, uh, three minutes, please ma'am, please sir, adhere to the three minutes. Uh, Ms. Venita, anyone signed up?
No name. Not for public comment.
Not for public comment? I thought we had one first.
We had one for limited public comment regarding agenda.
Okay. If you want it, well, I will allow, if you want to address the board, you can. I will allow that.
All right. Good evening. Uh, it's good to see you again, Chair Matthews, after running into you, uh, behind the video camera at the ACE Conference earlier today. Um, my name is Dave Wossinger. I'm the president of the ASP Union here on campus, um, and I rise in support tonight of the contract, uh, in front of you for approval. Um, I want to first thank, uh, Don Cusino and the College's team for their work with the ASP Union on getting this contract together, um, over the last few months in the meet, uh, in weekly meetings that we had. But also, I want to recognize the members of our negotiating team, uh, that are, uh, both here in attendance tonight and also, um, either watching online or unable to attend. Uh, primarily Jeremy O'Malley here, who served as our spokesman, uh, for the team, our main point of contact with the college, um, Evelyn Lynn, April Batten, Ricky Reynolds, uh, and Aaron Clark Inman, who couldn't be here tonight, um, and our UNISERV Director, Grayler Wilson, um, who is watching online. Um, again, I just wanted to, to thank everybody and to, to say that the union is, uh, is happy and looking forward to the next three years of working with the college over all the things that we face here in higher education, and, uh, we await your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. We are moving on to board comment. Any board comments?
Trustee Taylor.
Um, uh, I actually, I have a really special board, um, comment. So, um, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate a significant personal achievement of one of our very own board members. Um, so I am proud to share that board member Chair Angela Matthews has recently been ordained as an elder in her church. This is not just a title. It signifies her commitment to her faith, community service, and spiritual leadership. Becoming an elder involves a deep dedication to guiding others, providing support, and fostering a sense of belonging and hope, hope in life, hope in the faith. And I actually had the pleasure, um, of attending Chair Matthews' ordination along with, uh, Ms. Duncan, and it was, it was a beautiful ceremony. It truly was, and it was such an honor, um, to be there. And I just, I can't even express it as much as I want to right now. Um, but embracing this role as an elder amplifies her ability to inspire and lead, not just in her church, but in all aspects of her life. So I would like everyone just to take a moment to express our congratulations to our very own chair.
Board of comment?
Not today, Madam Chair. Anything? I would like to thank Dr. Robinson and CFO Don Wilsky and team for a great budget workshop. I'm always honored to, um, attend workshops. It's always hopeful and, um, plenty of knowledge, um, to learn and, you know. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you for taking the time, and thank you for taking care of our budget. I appreciate you.
Yeah.
So I would like to share just a, a little bit of wisdom that we received this morning at the Michigan ACE Conference. There was a very inspirational segment that was led by Ms. Nene Brown, and it was brag your swag. And as we are in a room with a bunch of great people with great gifts, and we're doing great things here at LCC, I just want to encourage you to brag on yourself and not be afraid to tout the accomplishments, the great work that we are doing here at LCC. If you haven't taken a moment to update your LinkedIn, take, make time to, to do that and go out there and network and link up with some other people and, you know, tell the great story that we are building here. We say where success begins, and so I think that it's already beginning to reflect in our numbers, but as each one of us just begin to be more intentional, I think we'll continue to see that trend grow. So thank you.
So, uh, the last comment.
Madam Chair, can I go before you, so you can be last? I have a comment.
Okay. I'm wondering if we're, we're thinking on the same page.
Nope, nope, no. I don't think so.
Can I tell the past?
Okay. I also too wanted to commend you on your eldership. Um, I don't think a lot of people realize that is a male-dominated field, and in the African American community is often looked down upon for women to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ. And so that is a huge step for you to persevere through that and to move forward and not let anyone, um, hinder you in that. So I really commend you on that achievement that you have done.
Right there. I'm gonna stay right there. Uh, and so thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for that word, because oftentimes we don't do that. You know, we highlight and build up everyone else, and then we just go about doing the work. Um, so that's, I, I really try to make a effort to see you, um, and to acknowledge you, but I do, just don't do the work and that's it. So thank you so much. I, I do want to say, um, there is a, a, a person who is here in the midst of us, um, who has, uh, persevered through, through a lot, um, and they are a silent power, um, and they have a lot of wisdom, they have a lot of knowledge that they share with each and every one of us. And so I just want to recognize something special with regards to this individual, and I want to recognize their birthday, which I do believe was last week. I don't know the date, but it was last week. Trustee Proctor had a birthday.
Thank you.
Matthews, trustee Proctor's colleagues on the Red Cross Board did a champagne toast for him on his birthday.
Champagne.
There's a bottle.
We ain't got no bottles up in here.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
So if there are any further adduce here, um, we are going to, um, have closed session.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that the board enter into closed session per, to Section 8A of the Michigan OMA for the purpose of discussing the board's executive liaison, assistant liaison, yearly performance review, per her request to be undertaken in a closed session and to enter a closed session for the purpose of discussing strategies and negotiation session connected with the collective bargaining agreement under Section 8C of the OMA.
Thank you, Vice Chair Frazier. There a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Lavelle. It has been moved by trustee, Vice Chair Frazier, and second by trustee Lavelle, that we enter into closed session for the aforementioned statements that he set forth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
...
Terry Fraser.
Here.
Noel Garcia, Hope Lavelle.
Present.
Angela Matthews.
I'm sorry.
Robert Proctor.
Here.
Chad Taylor. And Shonda Thomas.
I'd like to move to approve Ms. Duncan's performance and evaluation.
There's second. Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair Fraser and second by Trustee Thomas to approve Ms. Duncan's evaluation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, call the row. Motion carried.
I move to approve Ms. Duncan's salary adjustment by 4% effective July 1, 2025.
There's second.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair Fraser, second by Trustee Lavelle to approve Ms. Duncan's. Salary increase by 4%. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, call the row. Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Angela Matthews, Terrence Fraser.
Aye.
Noel Garcia, Robert Proctor.
Aye.
And Shonda Thomas.
Aye.
Chad Taylor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move to approve the proposal ASP CPA.
There's second.
I'll second.
By Vice Chair Fraser, second by Trustee Lavelle to approve the A. ASV CPA collective collective bargaining agreement. Is there any discussion? There's a lot of letters up in there. Um, agreement. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, call the row. Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Noel Garcia. And Shonda Thomas.
Aye.
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Chad Taylor.
Aye.
Terrence Fraser.
Yes.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Before we adjourn, trustees, I did send you. Oh, we got one more? Oh, come on. Let's consolidate these. FMA.
I move to approve the proposal to FMA CPA.
There's second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair Fraser and second by Trustee Taylor to approve the FMA. The bargaining. CPA, collective bargaining unit agreement. I have, we have to have this right on the records. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, call the row. Chad Taylor.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Noel Garcia. And Shonda Thomas. Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Terrence Fraser.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Before we adjourn, trustees, I did send you, I did put at your desk a trustee-generated idea and initiative. This is nothing new. Previous trustees, Abud, as well as Hildago. Um, under trustee Abud, when he was here, we did do this particular book stipend, and then Hildago did mention it, so it's not new. We had discussed it at some point in time, he and I. So I would like for you to take a look at this because I am going to bring it back in September, and um, I'll be looking for your support with this idea. I move to adjourn. Also, I'll say, excuse me, I'll in favor say aye. Okay, we gone.